Tonight's around the plate planning board meeting is being conducted using Zoom. I'd like to call the meeting in order, please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. This meeting is available for live viewing on Facebook, live listening via the phone and information provided on the town's website. The meeting will also be rebroadcast on ICAT Government Access Spectrum Channel 1303. Tonight for each subject to a public hearing, we will follow similar order of operations as we normally do, except tonight we're using remote access options. Applicants will be invited to join the meeting by video or call when their case is called. Once the public hearing is open, public input each case can be received either by email or phone. Similar to a regular meeting, each person providing public comment will need to give their full name and address. They will be given up to five minutes to provide their comments to the board. Once your comments have been received, we will move on to the next email or call if any are waiting. We ask anyone sending in comments to put the address or case number in the subject line of the email. During the public hearing for each case, the staff will monitor the planning board at ironic plate.org. That's planning board@ironicplate.org email. The emails will be read into the record by staff. Please be sure to provide your name and address for the record. Or the public can call in using information provided on the website displayed at the bottom of the screen on Facebook. While the public is listening to the meeting on the phone, they can provide comment on the current case by virtually raising their hand by pressing star nine on their phone. If you call them to make comment on a public hearing case, you will receive the prompt on the phone that you have been unmuted. That is your cue to speak to the board. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for your participation and patience as we continue to navigate through the public hearings. With that, Michelle, will you call the first case, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm having a little technical difficulty over here. First item on the agenda is case number PB 2021 dash zero three dash one. Upon the matter of request by Jenny Lee for revised site plan approval to operate a nail salon with a primary residence on the second floor on premises 1825 East Ridge Road and an M manufacturing district.
Do we have an applicant on the phone?
We do, I'll be inviting them to be able to speak in just a moment. So there should be Doug, who I believe is the current owner of the property and the representative of the buyer.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Doug, did you have anybody else with you or no?
Jenny Lee had just called me, she's trying to call in, but she was.
Can I ask if I'm, well, can I ask for the her last night? I don't want to give her phone number away, but does her number end in two, two?
Tell you in two seconds.
Okay.
Carrie, yes, I have the file here.
Okay, thank you.
It is two, two, you are correct.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to have Jenny will be able to listen in and be connected via phone. Jenny, you don't, if you are connected to the, to the meeting currently. And so Doug or Jenny, I would have you guys share the, make your case to the planning board.
Okay, from what I understand, you, we went through the process and the, I think it was two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, could you please start with your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Douglas Hauriliak, H A W R Y L I A K. And the address we're talking about is one eight two five East Ridge Road. And from what I understand, we're, we're trying to get approval for Jenny to be able to live upstairs and operate her nail salon. And we're hoping to address any issues for that at this time.
Okay, is there anything else you want to say about the application or before we go on to any board members questions? Does the applicant want to say anything about the application? Okay, here, Harry, none, any of the board members have any questions?
I, I had a couple of questions. We talked last time, Doug, I think you remember about the repair of the garage.
Yes.
Can you just state to us what that is going to be?
Yes, the garage door is basically collapsed, so wasn't sure if Jenny wanted to keep the garage or not. She confirmed she does. So upon her approval, we'll be putting a new garage door on there.
Okay, I assume that it will be up to code with the paint and all that also?
Yes.
All right. And Carrie, I just have a question about the parking. The only parking that truly exists is in the front and it consists of, I believe, six spaces. Is that within requirement for her?
Yeah, so if memory serves me, I, and forgive me, I think that we did the parking analysis and the parking spots that they had shown met the requirement. Because they have to meet the requirement for the retail space down below and then also the residential above. My understanding is that this did not require a variance as presented.
So the six spots plus the garage is enough?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. What entrance is being used for the business and what entrance is being used for the, the residential portion? There's one, there's an entrance on the east and an entrance on the west and you can just describe them.
Correct, so if you're facing the building on the right, which would be the west, that would be the apartment. And then the left would be the main entrance for the, the business side. Now, she's not sure from what, talking to her, how long it's going to be before she's ready to open her business. It could be up to a year and she would contact you guys and make sure everything's compliant for what you're, she needs to do.
Okay, that's what we're trying to do tonight, though, I thought. So the other question I have, and I know that I'm not the only one that had this question, is that signage that's on the property currently? That's advertising something other than what is existing on that property? Did the staff look into that?
We did have a chance to, to take a look at that and what it appears, looking at historic imagery. At one time, there were actually two signs on this property or in the vicinity of this property. When you look at aerial photography going back historically. The, we do find record in the building permit that was issued to the storage located on double bice. There is a reference to signage approval out on Ridge Road and double bice. So this was something that was approved by the town previously. I suspect the double bice at that time was a private road. So there would not have been a, a right of way permit needed. But my understanding from just talking with staff and trying to figure out exactly what happened is that some town approval was granted, allowing them to build it in what they believed, I think at the time, to be part of the, the right of way portion. So to the, if the property, if the sign, the remaining sign is just in fact encroach on the, the property. In other words, it's not on the double bice right of way. Then it would be a pre-existing non-conforming condition. So that we would, or because it was approved by the town previously. So where the town doesn't have the ability to make them take it down, it's not her sign or this property sign, it belongs to another party.
So she buys a property and the signs on the property, she owns the sign.
It's similar to when folks buy a, a house and.
Right, there's something left in the basement, I get it.
No, 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 or where the neighbor's fence technically is on their property. So in this instance, she would, because a new survey isn't being prepared, at least to my knowledge, hasn't been prepared. That, that denotes what fixtures and things exist in, within the property or the boundary line. I, it's hard to know whether or not that sign that's shown on the, on the, on the survey is the former sign that was, that would have predated the, the storage building and would have been associated with the, the animal hospital, which had a sign or it's this reflecting this current sign. So that's the challenge, it's a little bit of a, a little bit difficult to try to parse out exactly what happened. There's not great records associated with some of the development that happened in this neck of the woods.
Just, just for the record, there is a new survey from February as part of the application.
Yeah, then it wasn't a new survey of, you'll note on the notes, I think it was the fifth or sixth note on that. It was prepared just for the purposes of showing how and where the parking spaces could fit on the site. So they indicated that no new field survey was conducted. And they were using old former filings with the county clerk's office that have been done previously.
So here's my question. If she only gets one sign per property. Does that one, is that the one that's going to count?
No, well, at this point, then, if she needed new signage, freestanding signage, building signage, she would be allowed to do by right. But if she needed signage, freestanding signage, likely what we would do to rectify the situation would be to have her get a variance. Which would then help explain the zoning board would have to contemplate the circumstances that led to the her need for a variance.
Okay, I'm not going to hold this up by that, but it just, the whole thing just smacks of being a little weird to me.
And I'm not going to disagree with you, unfortunately.
I mean, here we have another business being advertised on somebody else's property. If I bought it, I'd take a chainsaw to it, let them come after me.
Well, I think our town attorney would say that would be.
Right, but if it were my property, you would have a, and I bought it and it was there, I bought that sign too. So the other thing that I just have real quickly, Doug, is on the south end of the property. It's sort of a mess back there, and I know that you're butting up against the somebody else's property. But that needs some attention. There's an awful lot of garbage back there.
Yes, I know that, I think my, right to my end, but yeah, we have plans. Every year I go out and pick up the garbage because it looks horrible. So I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. I've exhausted everybody else, Bernie.
You're muted.
We're both muted, Bernie. You're muted. You've never sounded so good, but you're muted.
Sorry about that. I'm having technical difficulties too, so I'm using my phone. So does anybody else have any other questions? Hearing none while we were waiting there for me. I guess we would move to opening the public hearing.
I don't have any other, I don't have any attendees that are raising their hand or indicating that they'd like to participate in the public hearing.
And do we have any emails or any other comments from anybody watching?
I'm going to point to Michelle for her to look at the planning board at around the way dot org.
I have no emails that I can see currently right now.
With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. We, we would, this is type two, correct? Michelle?
Correct, correct, type two.
Correct.
So with that, I would, I would take a motion on the proposal in front of us, and I just want to give everybody a heads up. We're going to have to do it by roll call today because with my phone, I can't see everybody. So we're going to have to do it by roll call.
I would offer up a motion if you would like it, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
For case PB two zero two one dash three dash one, I would move that we approve the application as submitted with the following conditions. That any new signage must come back to the planning board. And that the garage structure must be fixed up to be compliant with property maintenance codes.
Second.
Thank you, Miss Hollenbeck. And I'm trying to, this is for, I guess it's for final site plan, is that correct? Just want to make sure. Revised site plan, I'm sorry.
I motion would be, yeah, for for final site plan approval.
Yeah, it says revised site plan on the, on the description. That okay, Spence? Okay, so with that, I'm going to do roll call. Blockies and I, Mr. Evelyn?
I.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
Hi.
Mr. Uver?
Hi.
Is Mr. Palermo on? I didn't see him on the phone.
Nope.
Okay, is Miss Murray on as an alternative?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Is that an I for yes, for the proposal? Or I that you're on, sorry.
I that am on.
Okay, is that an I for for this particular motion? I or nay, Jackie?
I.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Reed?
I.
Mr. Richards?
Hi.
That passes seven, eyes, zero nay. One absent. With that. Best of luck with your business and let's move on to the next case.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, next case on the agenda is case number PB twenty twenty one dash zero three dash two. Upon the matter of request by David Chappius and Matthew Purdue for floodplain coastal erosion hazard area environmental protection overlay district EPOD permits to construct a three season addition and storage room on premises forty nine twenty five Culver Road and an R one residential district.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant is present and I will allow them to join the meeting now, and they should be able to hear us and be able to chat with the board as well.
Yes, we're here. David Chappers and Matt Purdue, we're both here. Please state your address too, please.
We both live at forty nine twenty five Culver Road.
Thank you. And can you just give for everybody just a brief explanation of what you're looking to do tonight?
Uh, yeah, we're just looking to put a small storage addition on off of our deck on the northeast corner of our home, and it doesn't exceed where our house is now. It doesn't, it doesn't go any further north than where our house is now. And then on the south side of our home, we're looking to put a three season addition.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all we're allowed to put. The DEC says we can't possibly make our house any larger. We are now at twenty four point something percent of what we were in nineteen eighty eight. So this is it.
Thank you. And with that, before I turn it over to the board, I thought from the staff, there's been a lot of emails going back and forth regarding this, and also we were waiting for some comments from the conservation board. So before we jump into questions, I thought, Carrie, could you just give us the status of what you've seen and where we're at with all of that correspondence?
Actually, I would defer to Michelle as board secretary to provide the update on the conservation board's comments. I believe that they prepared a response to the planning board in response to the planning board's requests. Michelle, am I correct about that?
That is, that is correct, Carrie, and we've also invited David, Daniel David tonight from the conservation board to make those amendments revisions to the comments that were submitted.
Right. Yeah, we had, we had previously commented that we wanted to be more sure of the height, the elevation of the project. And after reviewing some additional information, including the county's light, our documents and additional information submitted by the applicant, we're satisfied that it's above the floodplain. So or the flood elevation. And so as long as the applicant meets the DEC requirements and any possible floodplain development permit that might be required. We're, we have no additional comments and we're satisfied with the project.
Thank you. We always appreciate the conservation board's comments. Appreciate that. Thank you. With that, anybody else on the board have questions, comments, concerns? And Alan, I think you're recusing yourself from this one, correct?
I think Alan's already left. Just so you know, he announced at the beginning of the meeting that he'd be recusing himself from this particular case. And so you'll have tonight, because Mr. Palermo is not in attendance, you'll have six voting members.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. I missed it when he stated that. But anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll offer you a motion.
Uh, no, I just wanted, yeah, before you most, I just wanted to thank the the applicants. It was a very detailed submission, and thank you for the very quick responses also. But go ahead, Mr. Evelyn.
And Chairman, I just wanted to point out that I'm not sure that the public hearing portion was conducted.
Ooh, oh.
So you might want to just.
I'm just so excited to offer a motion.
And no seeker as well.
Yeah, this is also a type two for the purposes of seeker. I will point out that we don't have anybody currently raising their hand, but if you wanted to formally open the and close the public hearing for the record, that probably be, makes Mr. Vanderwall very happy.
I will open up the public hearing and provided, Michelle, there's still nobody that would like to comment on this.
I do not have, I did not see anything come through my emails as I'm also having technical difficulties to open them. So if anybody's interested in speaking, I would say go through the chat or.
Yeah, we have nobody who's raising their hand.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
With no one objecting, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Evelyn, would you like to move to a motion, please?
You sure? It's okay now?
Yes. You won't get your hands slapped now, go ahead.
As it pertains to case PB two zero two one dash oh three dash two. On a matter of request by David Chappius and Matthew Purdue, I move that we approve the EPOD permits as submitted.
I'll second that.
Once, and there's no condition, so with that, blockies and I, Mr. Evelyn?
I.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
Hi.
Mr. Uver?
Hi.
Ms. Murray?
Hi.
Ms. Reed?
I.
That passes with six eyes, zero nay. One absent and one recuse. Congratulations and best of luck this time getting everything done. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I don't recall, were there any meeting minutes or anything else?
Were. And I have a couple of edits for you, Michelle. If you're ready.
See, I got to get this. Ready. Oh, am I unmute? No.
No, you're good.
No, you're good, Michelle.
I'm pretty sorry.
At the end of the first page where I recused myself. Although in French class in high school, I was in fact, Michelle. I am not in professional life any longer.
Good catch.
And right below that, the letter received from D Markham in opposition of not.
Gotcha.
And then that's it. If you make those changes, I move we approve the minutes as amended.
Oh, do I have a second, Mr. Reed? Will you a second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes six to zero. One absent. And one left the meeting. Mr. Richard left, correct?
I think he exited, exited before the case was called.
Okay. Anything? Any other matters before the board? Hearing none.
I just wanted to update the board, and certainly you could make the motion to adjourn, but I just want to let you know that it's my understanding that we may be moving toward in person beginning April. So just more, stay tuned for more information about that.
Thank you for the update. With that, I'll make a motion that we we call it a night and the meeting's over. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Night.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Ronicoid Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.